Someone like to make a motion to return to the regular board meeting to public session? Dr. Venator, thank you. Is there a second? Mrs. Leatherbarrow, all in favor? Opposed, abstentions, motion carries unanimously. I would like to call the regular board meeting to order. All members of the board are present except Mr. Mecca. Okay, I'm just looking. Dr. Marsloff, would you like the latest on the pledge of allegiance, please?
I would love to. I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of America and to the Constitution of the United States.
Be advised that in the event of a fire emergency and an evacuation should be necessary and alarm will sound. Please note all marked emergency exits and evacuate well away from the building. At this time, we request that everyone please silence their cellphones or any other electronic devices at this time. Thank you. Would someone like to make a motion to add an addendum to the personnel consent agenda and approve the agenda as amended? Mrs. Leatherbarrow, second. Mrs. Van Seis, any discussion? All in favor? Motion carries unanimously. Mrs. Carey, would you please administer the ceremonious oath of office, please?
Yes, I'd be happy to. At this time, I would like to re-administer the oath of office to the newly elected board members, Mr. Borenstein and Mr. Lemay. They were both sworn in earlier this evening at 5:45 PM. And Mr. Mecca, I would like to note he will be taking his oath of office sometime prior to July 20th. Each will serve a three-year term concluding June 30th in 2021. So at this time, I would like Mr. Borenstein and Mr. Lemay to come to the podium. But again, there's not a difference.
Y'all grow loud, then.
Yes, I will. Alright, please raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, state your name.
I, Eric Borenstein.
I, Sean Lemay.
Do solemnly swear
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New York.
And the Constitution of the State of New York.
And that I faithfully discharge the duties of
And I will faithfully discharge the duties of
Member of the Board of Education
Member of the Board of Education.
For the Williamsville Central School District
For the Williamsville Central School District.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my abilities.
Congratulations.
Dr. Marsloff, do we have any recognition this evening?
We do not.
Okay. Mrs. Beeger, would you please read the board's public expression statement?
I would be happy to. Welcome to all who have come to observe this regular board meeting. Per Policy 1510, the board has set aside 30 minutes for public expression, a time when we invite members of the community to share their ideas and concerns with us. We welcome this opportunity to hear from you. Each person will have up to three minutes in which to address the board. You'll be signaled with a yellow flag at two and a half minutes so that you can conclude your remarks. This is a meeting held in public rather than a public meeting, which means we will not be engaging in dialogue with you this evening. But rest assured, we are listening carefully. We take seriously what you have to say. Thank you for your cooperation, and we don't have anyone signed up for our first public expression. Did anyone want to come to the microphone at this time? Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Would someone like to make a motion to adopt the election process for the election of officers for the Board of Education? Mrs. Van Seis, is there a second? Mrs. Leatherbarrow, all in favor? Opposed, abstentions, motion carries unanimously. Mrs. Carey, would you please administer the election of the officers at this time?
Yes. Nominations are now in order for the Office of President for the Board of Education.
I'd like to nominate Sean Lemay for president.
Mr. Lemay, do you accept the nomination?
I do.
Are there any other nominations for the Office of President for the Board of Education? Hearing no other nominations, nominations are now closed. Mr. Lemay, would you like to make a statement?
Uh, no, thank you.
Any other remarks? Hearing no other remarks or discussion, I will now take a roll call vote. Please respond yes, no, or abstain. Mrs. Beeger?
Yes.
Mr. Borenstein?
Yes.
Mrs. Leatherbarrow?
Yes.
Mr. Lemay?
Yes.
Dr. McClary? Mr. Meyer?
Yes.
Mrs. Van Seis?
Yes.
And Dr. Venator? Congratulations, Mr. Lemay. You are the elected president for the 2018-19. Okay, nominations will now be in order for the Office of Vice President for the Board of Education.
I would like to nominate Teresa Leatherbarrow for Vice President.
Mrs. Leatherbarrow, do you accept the nomination?
Yes.
Are there any other nominations for the Office of Vice President? Hearing no other nominations, nominations are now closed. Mrs. Leatherbarrow, would you like to make a statement?
No, thank you.
Any other remarks? Hearing no other remarks or discussion, I will now take a roll call vote. Please respond yes, no, or abstain. Mrs. Beeger?
Yes.
Mr. Borenstein?
Yes.
Mrs. Leatherbarrow?
Yes.
Mr. Lemay?
Yes.
Dr. McClary?
Yes.
Mr. Meyer?
Yes.
Mrs. Van Seis?
Yes.
And Dr. Venator?
Yes.
Congratulations, Mrs. Leatherbarrow. You are elected Vice President for the 2018-19 school year. Okay, at this time, I would like to ask Mr. Lemay and Mrs. Leatherbarrow to come and sign the, take their oath of office. Raise your right hand and repeat after me. Actually, do Sean first. I state
I, Sean Lemay
Do solemnly swear
Do solemnly swear
That I will support
That I will support
The Constitution of the United States
Constitution of the United States
And the Constitution of the State of New York
And the Constitution of the State of New York
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties of
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties of
President of the Board of Education
President of the Board of Education
For the Williamsville Central School District
For the Williamsville
According to the best
Best of my ability.
Raise your right hand and repeat after me. I
I, Teresa Leatherbarrow
Do solemnly swear
Do solemnly swear
That I will support
That I will support
The Constitution of the United States
The Constitution of the United States
And the Constitution of the State of New York
And the Constitution of the State of New York
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties of
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties of
Vice President of the Board of Education
Vice President of the Board of Education
For the Williamsville Central School District
For the Williamsville Central School District
According to the best of my ability And now at this time, I will ask Dr. Marsloff, Superintendent of Schools, to take your oath.
I, Scott Marsloff
Do solemnly swear
Do solemnly swear
That I will support
That I will support
The Constitution of the United States
The Constitution of the United States
And the Constitution of the State of New York And that I will
President of the Williamsville Central School District Superintendent of the Williamsville
According to the best of my ability
According to the best of my ability.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you. Per Policy 2220, I would like to appoint Mary Beeger to serve as the parliamentarian and timekeeper for the 2018-2019 fiscal year. Thank you for taking it on for a third year.
You're welcome.
Would someone like to make a motion to approve the annual appointments, items A through CC, double CC as presented? Mr. Meyer, is there a second? Mr. Borenstein, thank you. Any discussion? Okay, all in favor? Mrs. Leatherbarrow? Thank you. Motion carries unanimously. Would someone like to make a motion to approve the annual designations A, B, and C as presented? Mrs. Beeger, is there a second? Dr. McClary, thank you. Any discussion? All in favor? Motion carries unanimously. Would someone like to make a motion to approve the item D, bank depositories as presented? Mrs. Van Seis, second. Mrs. Leatherbarrow, any discussion? Mr. Borenstein?
Has the membership for the annual audit committee charter been determined?
Uh, that is further down on the agenda here.
Oh, okay.
Yep. This is the bank depositories, what banks the district does business with.
Oh, sure. Okay, got it.
Okay. Any other discussion? Yeah, all in favor? Motion carries, I'm sorry, any opposed? Abstentions? Thank you. Motion carries 701. Would someone like to make a motion to adopt the policy manual? Mrs. Beeger, second. Mrs. Leatherbarrow, any discussion? All in favor? Mr. Borenstein? All in favor? Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries unanimously. Would someone like to make a motion to approve the annual authorizations, letters B through E? Mrs. Van Seis, is there a second? Um, Dr. McClary, any discussion? All in favor? Motion carries unanimously. Would someone might like to make a motion to approve items F through H? Mrs. Van Seis, thank you. Is there a second? Mrs. Leatherbarrow, any discussion? Mrs. Beeger?
I'm just curious, does the mileage reimbursement rate, does that fluctuate every year? Is that the same for everyone? I'm just curious how that works.
It changes from year to year based on what the cost of traveling is.
I had a feeling. Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome. Any other discussion? All in favor? Motion carries unanimously. Would someone like to make a motion to approve items I through M? Mrs. Van Seis, thank you. Is there a second? Uh, Dr. Venator, appreciate it. Any discussion? Mrs. Leatherbarrow?
Um, sorry, I'm voting.
Oh. Any discussion? Anybody else? Nope. Okay, all in favor? Motion carries unanimously. Someone like to make a motion to approve item N? Mrs. Beeger, is there a second? Uh, Mr. Meyer, thank you. Any discussion? Okay, all in favor? Motion carries unanimously. Uh, would someone like to make a motion to approve the Board of Education Liaison Guidelines and Appointments as presented? Mr. Meyer, is there a second? Dr. Venator? Is there any discussion? I guess there is. Go ahead.
Call O for a separate vote, which is the, um, school liaisons.
Uh, well, that is where we're at right now. Which subsection? Are you looking at like E, the, uh,
Sorry.
School liaisons?
E.
I believe you're looking for E?
Yes, E, sorry.
Okay. E is now polled for a separate vote. Any other discussions? So then we are voting on, um, just to be clear here. I'll actually break them out here. I won't read everything. We're gonna vote on the Erie County Association of School Board Delegate Assembly as presented, the Erie County Association of School Board Legislative Team as presented, Erie County Association of School Board Budget and Finance Team Representatives as presented, the Voting Delegates and New York School Board Association Annual Conference in New York City as presented, the impartial hearing board member and assignment for special impartial hearing officers as presented, the Audit Board Committee as presented. Mr. Borenstein, I know that was something you were questioning about a little, few minutes ago.
Yeah.
Uh, and finally, the new position of the Shared Services Committee as presented. Any other discussion on this? Go ahead, Dr. McClary.
I, I believe that we need to have a discussion about the shared services.
Want to pull that one as well?
So I think that needs to be pulled so that we have the opportunity to discuss it.
Fair enough. So H is now, now polled from that, so the Shared Services Committee is now polled from the vote. Okay. Everything else in agreement? Okay. Okay, all in favor?
All in favor of.
Of voting on everything minus E and H, which we will take separate votes on. All in favor? Opposed, abstentions, so motion carries unanimously for those. Now to come back around to item E. Yep. Uh, this is the appointment of the district-wide liaisons with the guidelines listed in your packet, and then the, uh, the three schools as well as the PTSA councils, SEPSA, District Shared Decision-Making Team, Education Foundation, Inter-High Council, and the Superintendent's Community Council. Discussion? Mrs. Leatherbarrow?
I want to start the discussion with the board liaison guidelines. This is minor, but one of the items says to complete the PTA liaison report. I'd like to recommend that we remove the words PTA. Just have it be liaison report because not all of the assignments are PTA meetings. So it's attachment O, Board Liaison Guidelines number five.
Oh, you're throwing a curve in there because technically item one would also be, uh, would have to be changed.
Item one of the board liaison guidelines?
Uh, so would item six, so would item eight.
Why?
Uh, brightly attend meetings, send a substitute board member or contact board president and the PTSA president if unavailable to attend, unable to attend. So if we're having to change the wording. Seek answers to questions raised by PTSA and report back in a timely manner. Complete your PTSA liaison report in a timely manner. Board concerns raised at the PTSA meeting. Limit contents to five minutes unless additional time is requested by the PTA, PTSA president.
Different from the attachment, oh, that's in the packet.
Oh, I'm reading off, uh,
Here it says, complete the PTA, not just PTA.
Ah.
There's other assignments.
Nope, I'm aware of that. Got it. Nope, the, what I was reading off of apparently is old, old packet content. I gotcha. So you're looking at just five. Gotcha.
I just want to take out the word PTA letters.
Okay.
Not all the liaison reports are for that.
Okay. So the amendment here would be to modify E number five, striking the words or the letters PTA from, from the description? Other discussion? Yes, Mrs. Van Seis?
I just felt the need to bring up some of our assignments. We discussed this previously throughout the year, especially at the board retreat. So when I saw it in our packet, to keep things status quo and not move forward with some of the discussion that we previously had didn't seem, I guess, beneficial. So my concern with some of the other assignments beyond our PTSA responsibilities at each school, just reevaluating or reassessing if a board representative is truly necessary in attending. Um, I could speak to SEPSA. I am the board representative. And what I found is that this is not a forum. There is no open discussion, um, other than introducing myself. And I expressed that both Anna Ciari is there, and if Anna's not there, then Cheryl is there as a district representative. So what happens is it's a presentation, a two-hour PowerPoint presentation that I know Anna would happily share with all of us. So I don't know if that's the best utilization of my time as a board member. I think I would like to serve it in another capacity. I know there's a couple other committees that people have voiced the same. So before we just continue on as status quo, perhaps we need to reassess if it's necessary.
Mrs. Leatherbarrow?
Um, I agree with those sentiments. I think that these liaison assignments have been around for quite some time. And since then, we now do community forums, which we've been doing now for what, three years? But I know that these liaison assignments have existed a long time before that. Um, we also have opportunities now for the board to meet with members of the WTA a couple times a year. So there have been increased opportunities for two-way communication and dialogue. We also eliminated a policy at the beginning of the year that prohibited any two-way communication from, from coming through to us. Um, I am in full support of continuing the school-based PTSA appointments and assignments. I am questioning the SEPSA. I'm also questioning PTSA council. I did have the opportunity to attend one of those last year, it might have been the year before. And it's only my observation that it seemed to be reports of reports. And I don't just want to become sort of like reporting on reports. I want it to be more beneficial to everyone's time that's at the table. And so what I would recommend is that we perhaps table these, these assignments in item E. Um, and between now and the next meeting, maybe reach out to some individuals from these committees to see their thoughts on whether it would really bother them if there wasn't a board member at each meeting or not. Because we haven't done that piece, and I think that piece is important. I'm also asking about the Education Foundation. I don't know currently who, who serves on that currently. Do you want to speak?
That's me. Um, honestly, all, all the times that I've attended, I've found them valuable and useful, so I wouldn't recommend axing it.
Similar, I'm making comment on the PTSA council. While I do agree, probably a good majority of it is reports on reports. There is new business conducted at the PTSA council level. Not a lot, but there is business. I know the superintendent attends. I don't know what he would feel like if, if there was no board presence with him.
Well, to that point, I do know that the superintendent attends, and I have great confidence in
True, that's valid.
And so if he were to attend and then give us a report, I don't see why that wouldn't be substantial enough. This isn't no way to take away any opportunities to communicate, but I think looking forward, when I ran for the board, I wanted to make sure it was something I had the time to commit to. But it was also very important to me that parents who have children currently in the schools were on the board. And my worry is that if we increase the assignments, now we have additional, um, community forums that we've added. And I know there's a Shared Services Committee that's starting up, so that's like an additional one. If this continues, will, will current parents be, um, afraid in the future to run for the board because of the commitment? It's really important to me that, um, that parents continue to stop up and run for the board. And it's hard to do that when you have little ones at home, especially for moms. And, uh, that's why I think we're bringing this up right now.
Mrs. Beeger?
I think it's fair to take the time to reassess, and I think if we do that, it is an important component that we would check in with those particular entities to see their thoughts about whether or not a board member is present. The way you explained SEPSA, if you're, if it's just a presentation and it's nothing you can bring back to us. I know with, um, I serve on the District Shared Decision-Making Team, and I really like being a part of that and being able to see the different plans in the schools and bring that back. So that's one that I would not want to lose board presence on. But we have added quite a few different parameters of means to communicate. And I think it's a good idea to reassess before just passing and continuing to assign and go to all these things if they're not the most meaningful ways for us to gain information about the district.
Dr. McClary?
I would like to see, and I admit my name is there, but I would like to see the representation at the Inter-High Council to continue because that's really of all of the different committees. That's the one that works directly with students.
Any other discussion? Mrs. Leatherbarrow, I heard you make a, a parliamentarian terminology of tabling. Did you want to make a formal motion to that extent?
Sure. I'll make a motion to table, this is what, item 11E? 12E? Tabled item 12E. Is there a second?
Is there a second? Dr. Venator, thank you. Any discussion? All in favor? Okay, motion carries unanimously. We'll, uh,
Tabled until when?
Tabled until whenever, but we'll, we'll make the goal to untable it, bring it back to the, to the table next month.
Okay.
Yep.
Because obviously for September, things should be in place.
Uh, that leaves us with action item, uh,
H.
H.
Shared Services.
There we go. Yep, so this is the Shared Services Committee. I believe this was from, uh, Mr. Polinkars, if I'm not mistaken. This is a new position. Sorry, there you go. I'll just open it up for, for discussion. Dr. McClary?
I was just going to say that it's my understanding that this is in reference to the letter that each of us received from the county executive talking about the fact that, um, the state through the county is creating a shared services panel at the local level in which the possibility of school districts being invited to be included in the shared services, um, discussions. It refers somewhat to the fact that the schools don't have to be, if I'm reading it correctly, the schools are not required to be part of it. But, um, I think if it's any kind of opportunity for us as a school board to stay active and involved in promoting and discussing all of the good things that our district does and ways to see what we can do for our district, I think that it's something that we should
I think that it's something that we should be involved in. The discussion would also have to include if the district is choosing to be involved. I, I don't even know if it would be possible to have the board be involved but not the district. But that part doesn't make sense to me of doing it that way anyway. So I would ask about the school district. Their viewpoints of what they're going to do, if they're going to be involved or not be involved. And then opening on up to others.
Dr. Marsaf, could you comment on what the district's intentions are here?
Yes, I would see the district participating in the panel. There's a meeting later this month. And we haven't decided who from the leadership team will attend, but one of us should be there. I think it's on July 19th.
In the letter, yes.
5:30 perhaps.
July 19th, 5:00 to 6:30.
5:00 to 6:30, so.
ECC North.
Yeah, so we'll have somebody there from the district.
Okay.
Okay. Any other discussion?
My question is more whether this is really necessary for a board member to attend. I do understand, Dr. Marsaf has said that someone from the district would be representing, would be there to represent us. I do know that the man from Erie County Association of School Boards, the executive director, thank you, he is asking that people participate in this. But I also know that we pay dues to that organization. And we have two delegates here already, that one for the legislative team and one for the finance team that share out there, which then in turn the message then gets shared back out, I'm assuming, at this Shared Services Committee. So I'm just questioning whether we really want to appoint a liaison. Because once we do that, then it sort of becomes a precedent, and every year someone's required to attend. Or if we just let our district leadership represent to the district, and when there's issues of high concern, we show up and we represent. Like if it was something where they were asking us to merge and we didn't want to merge, clearly we would all be there. But if it's not necessary to assign someone, I would be, I would prefer to not assign someone. Seems like it would be an open invite thing whenever they would meet anyways.
Other discussion or comments on this?
Anybody else first?
I, I don't have any strong feelings. I guess the only thing that I would think is that if other districts have board members representing, that it might be nice for us to have the same, just so that we have the same kind of balance, district leadership and board leadership. But I also agree that, that, i- is it just one meeting per year, or is it several meetings? I know you mentioned the one in July, but is it throughout the year?
It said like an initial meeting in July. And then I'm assuming if it's like other kinds of committee things, the discussion would be, where do we go from here? What kind of meetings do we need? What don't we need, and so forth? The only thing I would add is I think in at least our goals that we had as a district, I'm sorry, as a board, not district goals, excuse me. Our board goals talked about continuing to be more active in terms of legislative matters. And.
That's a good point. And I was, I was actually thinking to Mrs. Leatherboro's point of do we need to really assign someone, or is this more of a meeting that people can just attend openly? But it sounds like if it's that kind of meeting where you start, you come up with your purpose and then your plan, then it would make sense for consistency.
May I suggest that we make this probationary for one year and then come back next reorg meeting next July to reevaluate this? We can make a note. I don't think we need to modify anything here. We just make a note and ask the district clerk to point it out to us next year at the reorg meeting to break this item out as a separate line item to be voted on separately to see if we want to continue with this. Would that be acceptable to you, Mrs. Leatherboro?
I, I don't know. I, I'm just questioning. This just seems kind of like a political thing, and I don't know when Mr. Polinkars' office is up. I'm not sure, but, um, I don't know. I'm not really feeling it.
I take it I have to take it on face value, assuming that there's no underlying political values and motivations to this. If there are, that would be why we would come back to this in a year and say, you know, we'll pass. That's, that's my own opinion. Any other discussion? Without any more, then I would say all in favor?
Are we voting on the probation?
We, we are voting on option H to appoint board member Shared Services Committee, which would be held by Dr. Susan McClary for this year.
When, in a, in a probationary period?
We can make it a probationary period, yes.
Sure.
We, we can ask the district clerk to, to make a note for us, yes, please. Acceptable?
Aren't all the assignments for one year anyways?
Technically, yes. That's why I'm not changing the motion. They are already by definition one year. We're just gonna flag it for next year to point this conversation out to us, to see if we really want to continue for another year. Any other discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Densions? Okay, that carries 620. Would someone like to make a motion to adopt the work of the board, the Joint Code of Conduct, Operating Principles, Guidelines, and Plan for Self-Evaluation as presented?
I will.
Mr. Bornstein, thank you. Is there a second? Mrs. Leatherboro, any discussion? All in favor? Motion carries unanimously. Would someone like to make a motion to adopt the Principles for Order or Controversial Meeting as Presented? Principles for Order for Controversial Meetings as Presented. A little of a tongue twister. Mrs. Beeger, thank you. A second? Mrs. Vance Ice, any discussion? All in favor? Motion carries unanimously. Reorg meetings fun?
So far.
Uh, last year we moved board visitations throughout the week versus being Friday morning visits. The attached proposed calendar is moving the board visits this year back to Fridays only. Board members are asked to visit a minimum of three schools each calendar year. What is the board's pleasure to do this year? How would we like to move forward with board visits? Mrs. Beeger?
Is it set in stone? Well, obviously we haven't voted on it, but is it necessary that we go back to Friday mornings? Or is there a possibility that we can contact some of these schools to spread them throughout the week?
Yes, this is a tentative schedule, so if.
I would very much like, if possible, to stagger those throughout the week, only because it's difficult for me to take time off of work Friday mornings repeatedly. But if it's staggered, that's a little more doable, at least for me.
Right. And I was going to ask that. Did, were the building principals contacted at each school to see if this was a good date and this was their recommendation for us?
I did send the request out to all the building principals and heard responses from several saying the date's okay. So I will reach out again with some updated dates and run it by them, because it is a tentative schedule.
Because this, as I looked at them and I see the community forum dates, you're talking Friday after Friday. So we're having two to three visits in one month. So I would suggest then to say that each board member attend at least three. I know personally I'm in a new position. I don't think it would be in my best interest to be using three days for that, just with, especially that they're on Fridays and a majority are at eight o'clock. That's already into my third period or second period, so if, if we can just find out if they could be staggered, that would definitely be better.
Any other discussion? Mrs. Leatherboro?
Regarding the dates, although I do agree that I don't think they shall be Friday mornings, this is regarding where it says adopt guidelines for an established school visitations. And I just want to review and sort of remind that under activity, it says the primary activity of the visitations will be a time of informal conversation between staff and board members lasting 30 to 45 minutes. I just think it's important that we have a format where we're able to visit with the teachers and the staff. I appreciate presentations and slide shows and all that wonderful stuff, but I really want us to honor the purpose of why we are visiting the school. And that is to have informal conversations between staff and board members. So I think that that's important, that that sort of go out to all principals and have, be a reminder. Just so we're not sort of ushered into a room or sort of given a tour. Tours are nice. Many of us have seen the buildings now, and I think just having the opportunity for the visitation is important. And then the side thing too, I wanted to ask about the refreshments. It says in, in this attachment R, refreshments will be provided at the board's expense. Do we typically do that? I'm hearing no in the audience.
I remember asking the same question last year, and they said that they were going to tell schools to send the bill to the board.
I just think we should take it off of here, because we all know, we've all been to the visitations, and the teachers are so sweet and kind and put out a wonderful spread for us. Why are we pretending that it came from us? Like it clearly comes from the teachers to us. Why, why does that need to be there if that's not really what's happening?
But the, I'm assuming say the expenses for the donuts.
But are we sure that that happens each time?
I don't know.
The district typically, typically takes care of up to $100 per visit for refreshments.
It goes over, it becomes a responsibility of the school?
Correct.
I thought I read in here too that it said something that like a sign was put out to say that it's from compliments of the board. I don't recall ever seeing that at a school. So maybe we can remove that from here if we're not doing it. I just think if we're not doing it, we shouldn't put it in print for doing it.
You are correct. It says, "Refreshments will be provided at the board's expense with an appropriate note or sign on display to indicate that they are an expression of the board's appreciation to the staff."
Yeah, and please don't misunderstand me. I so appreciate attending the school, and I think it's so kind, the beautiful spreads of food that are put out for us that the teachers are clearly doing for us. I just don't want in any way to take recognition as a board for that when it's clearly coming from them.
I, I have to wonder if it is done differently at different schools. I don't know if some are, I, I don't know. We, we should probably inquire in that and decide if we want to stay with what the policy states here, or should be consistent.
Right. Okay, that's all I had.
Okay. So what would we like to do in that? Would we like to change that terminology? Would we like to investigate further on that?
Sounds like we have to table this anyways, because we, we're reexamining the dates. So I'll make a motion to table this item.
Okay. Second? Dr. Banater, thank you. Any discussion on tabling? I will add to the discussion on tabling. What is our, uh, we understand moving the calendar dates themselves. This, this paragraph here, what would we like to do so that that way the district clerk can, can research or prepare this before we come back in August? Do we want to research this? Do we want to have this rewritten? Do we want to rewrite it and research it?
Let's start with research and see how it's done at each building, if it's been done consistently or if it has not, and go from there.
Mrs. Carey, could you please research the school visits from the past and see how that's been taken care of, if the board is actually reimbursing them, or to what extent we're doing, please?
I will look into it.
Thank you. All in favor? This is for tabling? Okay, motion carries unanimously. Would someone like to make a motion to adopt the Board of Education 2018-2019 meeting calendar as presented? Mr. Meyer, is there a second? Uh, Mr. Bornstein, any discussion? All in favor? Motion carries unanimously. Last year, the board set three, excuse me, two retreat dates. What is the board's pleasure for this year? Tentatively, right now, we have set Saturday, November the 3rd, 2018, and March 2nd, 2019. Please take a moment, take a look at your calendars and look. The goal is to have a 100% attendance rate. That being said, I will point out, November 3rd is my birthday, and, and I believe, I'm looking at my wife, she's going to shoot me if I go spend a whole day with the board. Not that we don't love you, but.
Why don't we do November 10th?
It's a long weekend.
Uh, November 10th falls into a long weekend, that's correct. November 12th is no school.
November 17th.
If I'm not mistaken, just as a side comment, I think we did it the end of October, didn't we? Like.
In NISBA.
That's the NISBA.
No, I know. I was thinking maybe the 20th? October 20th, maybe?
They're doing it, except for, I can't do it.
November 17th.
November 17th is the week before Thanksgiving. Yes, Mrs. Leatherboro?
I'm just curious, um, I'm trying to recall. We have, we have the NISBA conference, and I thought I saw.
It's at the end of October.
October 25th.
But was everyone attending?
Everyone minus two people.
Okay. I was thinking if everyone was attending, then it might not be necessary. It's a whole retreat. But never mind.
Oh, that would be a different agenda.
We'd have plenty of time to be together.
I see what you're saying.
So November 17th is on the board right now. How does that look?
I, I'm not available.
Not available.
But do it without me, that's fine.
That was November 17th.
That's not the goal. The goal is to do everybody. Let's back that up as much as we, let's, let's look at October 13th.
Yes.
Does that work for everybody, October the 13th? Mrs. Vance Ice?
You skipped over the 20th. Did we already discuss?
September and October, my weekends. Sorry, they're blocked.
So nothing in October?
That puts us into December, if you're still looking for unanimity.
Fair enough.
October 20th was already discussed.
October wouldn't work for Ms. Vance Ice.
Okay. 13?
You know, you guys are, you're, you're starting to eye back to that November 3rd date.
When's the September?
September, you'd be looking at the 29th.
Yes.
But, but didn't, uh, Mrs. Vance Ice, didn't she say September's out? Yeah, so September and October is out for weekends for her.
Sorry.
So that puts us into December then.
We know how much we love doing retreats in December.
December 1st.
December 1st, Saturday, December the 1st. How does that look? I'm getting a bunch of nods of yes. Mrs. Leatherboro?
What's the date?
Saturday, December 1st. Sure.
I, I have to just be honest. I, I would have to see. That's typically when the girls soccer has their banquet, and I'm in charge of running the banquet. Nor would I miss the banquet.
Don't, don't pick the first then. If you're in charge of the banquet, don't pick the first.
I, I don't want to have it on Christmas.
I have an idea.
Yes?
If we table this item, so we don't waste everybody's time, we can figure this out.
Well, here we've just narrowed down to the first. I'm gonna say tentatively, let's, let's put the first down. Let's see if we can at least get the tentative dates here. We, we, you know, and again, this is just tentative. We'll lock these in. If something comes up and somebody can't do it, then we, we can always shuffle the date later. So December 1st is agreeable right now to everybody. That's a tentative date, December 1st. The other date was March the 2nd, which seems a little quick to me.
Too close now.
Yep, I'm thinking that's a little too close. How about we look at maybe March 30th? That's four weeks later.
Can I ask when, um, because I didn't see that as one of our attachments, when the spring recess is?
Spring recess, I believe, is April the 22nd, the week of April 22nd. So it's a good three, almost four weeks away. The winter vacation this year is the week of February 18th, so you're almost dead in the middle of that. Almost, not quite. So theoretically, March 30th, Saturday, March 30th. How does that look? Bunch of nods, yes? Okay. Tentatively, March 30th.
Have to check with Mark also.
Yep. That's, that's why I keep saying tentative, because I know Mr. Mecca's not here, and that could change as well.
Okay.
Um, Mrs. Vance Ice, when would you know for sure on the December 1st? When do they set that date?
Depends on the coach, but I can, if he does want the first, I can push him and just try to do it. Like this time, we did it the second weekend, so I'll just ask him if we can push it back.
Okay. Okay. Uh, so this is only tentative. So this is only tentative and we don't have to vote on it. We can bring that up again next month to just confirm that. So Mrs. Carey, will you make sure that that pops into our agenda, please, for next month? Just to make sure that the dates are okay with Mr. Mecca?
Yes, I'll come from the dates.
Thank you. Last year, we held three community forums at each of the high schools. Two were on Saturday mornings, one was on the Wednesday evening. Tentatively, this year, we have scheduled the community forums this year on Saturday, November 17th, 2018 at South, Saturday, January 19th, 2019 at East, and Saturday, April 6th, 2019 at North. This is going back to a all-saturday schedule. Are these dates acceptable? Would anybody like to move these? I know we had some low attendance on that Wednesday night. I don't know if we want to shuffle those up again. Do we want, what's the thought? What's everybody, Mrs. Beeger, please?
I think it's not necessary for every single board member to be at community forums, while we would love for everyone to come, but I don't think we need to, unless there's major issues with any of these dates, that we don't really need to spend time shuffling these as people who are available can come.
I don't think we shuffled them last year. I think it was more for, we thought we'd get people that couldn't come on Saturdays to come on an evening. Although, as we recall, that Wednesday evening, it seemed to be a very low turnout, so I don't know why. I don't know if we, I think we promoted it pretty well, so. And yes, there is no board policy that mandates every board member attends the community forums or anything like that. It's, as many as can make it, can make it. Mrs. Leatherbarrow?
I'm just curious, because the turnout was somewhat low, even at the last two, if we might consider going down to two instead of three? Or if you want to keep it three and just have it be as Mary stated that, if you can make it, you can make it. I'm fine with that as well, I'm just bringing it as an option.
And I agree with that. I know I suggested it and I said that we previously discussed it, and I'm not sure if we did as a board or if I had the conversation with myself. But I know Dr. Marzloff and I actually talked about it, I think, at the last one, that I would rather see maybe two and a boost in attendance than three. So far, I think that I've gone to every single community forum now for the past two years and the attendance is not really high, not to say that the concerns aren't important from the people, but a suggestion was made that maybe we do it during the budget preparation and planning, so people feel that they can ask questions, voice some of their concerns or issues they might have. That might better serve us and what I would love to see is increased attendance from our community and not continue with three with only a handful of people showing up. So that was my intention suggesting previously about having two community forums. Just trying to make it maybe more meaningful to increase attendance.
Mrs. Beeger?
I agree with that. I think we chose three because we have three high schools and we wanted to keep it equitable, so, you know, we're kind of going and visiting everyone's turf, but if we were to do that and you think of times that are meaningful, I think the November date makes sense, especially with the Music Capital Project coming, that might be a time where people want to come and talk about what they're thinking or what they've heard is happening in the district. And that January date is really pretty quick after, when you think about the school calendar and winter recess. So perhaps we change that this year and go just November 17th and April 6th and see if we see a boost in attendance. I mean, when community forums first started, they were packed, the whole cafeteria was full.
We had a lot to talk about.
There were smart talk.
And that's what I think you're gonna find, when there's things to talk about, we're gonna have these rooms packed full. When there's nothing, you're gonna have light turnout. My only, my only concern, and it really is not a very major concern at this point, is that if we start to scale these back and then next year, we only see, you know, 20 people show up these, then do we next year then talk about scaling back again? And then all of a sudden, two years from now, we're at the point where we have no community forums anymore? And I think it's important that we, that we keep the forums open for people to come and talk to and have that two-way dialogue, because there is no other alternative presently for the community to come and talk to the board. But in the sense of going from three to two, I'm perfectly fine with two, as long as it's not that slippery slope. Any other discussion? Okay, so do we want to then just eliminate the January 19th one and keep November 17th and April 6th? That sound good? Fair, okay. Eliminate the Saturday, January 19th. Sorry, East.
Start there the following year.
We'll start there the following year, right.
I'm sorry, repeat that. So the sort of firm dates are the...
Saturday, November the 17th, 2018 at Williamsville South, Saturday, April 6th, 2019 at Williamsville North.
Okay, and the other dates are also then discarded?
The other date of January the 19th would be discarded.
Now, what about November 24th and January 26th? We picked, for example, the 17th, the 24th is not choice either.
For the community forums?
That's, I wanted to make sure, okay.
Yep, at this point, unless there's a compelling reason why we should move it.
No, that's why we wanted to.
Mrs. Leatherbarrow?
I was just going to suggest that we toss it back to the district just to determine the locations for us, instead of assuming that one location.
Well, I'm assuming because it's here, that the district's already made the locations approval. But I would assume that if there's a conflict, they'll let us know.
Okay.
For the purposes of public awareness, couldn't we also announce the times that they happen?
They are, well, they're not set in stone yet as for this, but they have typically historically been 9:00 AM until noon.
Yeah.
When it's on the Saturday mornings. And since we're not doing a Wednesday, we're not gonna worry about that time. What was that?
Thank you.
What did I say?
Yeah, that's what you said.
9:00 AM to noon. Okay. Yep. Would someone like to make a motion to approve the consent agenda and personnel agenda as presented? Moving on to actual regular board meeting now. Mrs. Beeger, is there a second? Mr. Bornstein, any discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries unanimously. Dr. Marzloff?
Thank you, Mr. Lemay. We have some new administrators with us in the audience this evening and I'd first like to introduce the board again to our new principal of North High School, Andre Thomas. Andre, you wanna come up to the podium? Mr. Thomas, please turn around and see the people standing and clapping for you.
Thank you.
If you're still getting the standing and clapping in a few years, you are really doing a good job.
I'd like to first just thank the board and Dr. Marzloff just for giving me this great opportunity to serve this great district, my building, North High School, in the capacity of principal. I also like to recognize my wife and my children who are here tonight on this special occasion. My wife has been a great support throughout my career, through the good and through the bad, so I really appreciate her. It hasn't always been easy, you know, as she could tell you, and again, her support has been awesome throughout the years in my career as an educator. I also like to thank also the staff, as they were just clapping, who came out tonight. We have some who came, who drove for 50 minutes to get here from Albion, so I really appreciate, you know, the Dunlops here. It's amazing to have staff like that who are willing to come out and support, so I'm very excited. Also, I'd like to just say that, you know, I'm looking forward to this opportunity to serve North High School in this new capacity. North has always been home and family to me. It's where I started my career in 2002 as a teacher and it's now where I'll continue my career as now the building leader and, again, excited. I'm humbled by this experience of this opportunity and, again, thank you for giving me this opportunity. Thank you.
Next, we have someone who left the district for a short while, but we were fortunate enough to have him apply for a position as assistant principal at South High School, Mr. Chris McDuffie.
First, I would like to thank Dr. Marzloff and the board for the opportunity to serve as assistant principal at Williamsville South High School. It's truly an honor and a privilege and it feels great to be back home and I'm just excited and ready to get started, so thank you.
Next, we have our new assistant principal at Maple West Elementary School, Lindsay Kubera. Lindsay?
I'm excited to be here after 10 years of working for the New York City Department of Education as a teacher and assistant principal. I'm excited to relocate to the Western New York area where my fam, well, my husband's family is from and I'm looking forward to working with Dr. Galuzzo, joining the Maple West team and becoming a member of the Williamsville community. Thank you very much.
And next, we have a new assistant principal for Dodge Elementary School, Heidi Bufamonte.
So a very genuine thank you to the Board of Education, Dr. Marzloff, Mr. Smolinich, and the Dodge staff for the very warm welcome I've been given. I'm ecstatic to be here, so I appreciate it.
I just wanted to make a motion to have a quick, maybe three to five-minute recess, just so the board can go over and meet our new appointees.
Oh, I think we could do that. All in favor? All right. Quick reset. I would like to thank the following retiree for her service to the district, Gretchen McCall, who was a teacher's aide, transit middle school for 19 years of service. Would someone like to make a motion to approve the minutes of the June 12th, 2018 regular board meeting? Mrs. Leatherbarrow, is there a second? Mrs. Beeger, are there any corrections or additions to the minutes? Nope. Okay, all in favor? Opposed? Abstentions?
Oh, of course. Thank you.
Mr. Bornstein, thank you. I'd love you to approve, but motion carries 701. Does anyone have a board acknowledgement that they would like to make? The 99th Annual Convention and Education Trade Show will be held October the 25th, 26th, 27th in 2018. This is for the New York State School Board Association. It will be in New York City, New York. Myself and Dr. McClary are the delegate and the alternate for this year's convention. I have down right now Mrs. Beeger, Mr. Bornstein, Mrs. Leatherbarrow, Dr. McClary, Mr. Mecca, and myself as being confirmed. Mrs. Van Sice, I have you down as a maybe. Now we need a confirmation.
Yes, I think I can go.
You are confirmed, okay? That leaves, I think, only two board members not present. Either one of those two board members would like to attend? Okay. Would someone like to make a motion to approve the registration and expenditures for Mrs. Beeger, Mr. Bornstein, Mrs. Leatherbarrow, Dr. McClary, Mr. Mecca, Mrs. Van Sice, and myself to attend the 99th Annual Convention and Education Trade Show, October 25th, 26th, 27th, 2018, in New York City, New York? Dr. Benator, thank you. Is there a second? Mrs. Leatherbarrow, any discussion? Dr. McClary?
No, just a reminder, please, like this second hits the opening registration date. We've got to get our registration in because things fill up immediately.
It's something about the prospect of Santa watching her at night that scares her.
Last year's.
There's a story there. All in favor?
Heard this story.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries unanimously. The Board of Officers Academy will be held in Rochester on September the 28th, 2018. I would like to attend this event. Dr. Marzloff, are you available to attend as well or no?
Possibly, I may be attending, I'm not sure.
Okay.
Yet.
Would someone like to make a motion to approve the registration and expenditures for myself and possibly Dr. Marzloff to attend the New York State School Board Association Board of Officers Academy in Rochester, New York, September the 28th, 2018? Dr. Benator, thank you. Is there a second? Dr. McClary, any discussion? All in favor? Motion carries unanimously, thank you. The Summer Law Conference will be held on July 19th, 2018 in Rochester, New York. Again, this is the New York State School Board Association Law Conference that will be held on the 19th. Dr. McClary would like to attend. Are there any other board members who would also like to attend this event? Okay, would someone like to make a motion to approve the registration and expenditures to attend the New York State School Board Association Summer Law Conference in Rochester, New York, July 19th, 2019, for Dr. McClary? Dr. Benator, thank you. Is there a second? Mr. Meyer, appreciate it. Any discussion? All in favor? Oh, Mrs. Beeger, please?
I just want to thank Dr. McClary for going to this conference. I am not able to, I did go last year, but I noticed that there's a session about ESSA and the implications on districts, so I'm very glad you're going and really looking forward to learning about what you learn at this conference. Thank you for representing us.
I'm hoping it really will be a productive discussion, especially on that topic. Thank you.
All in favor? Motion carries unanimously. The Erie County Association of School Boards, would someone like to make a motion to resolve to renew the board's membership to the Erie County Association of School Board Association and authorize the payment of $9,489 for the 2018-2019 annual membership due? Mr. Bornstein, thank you. Second? Dr. Benator, is there any discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Abstentions? Was that a vote for the positive?
It was.
Okay. Motion carries unanimously. The 40th Annual Western New York Educational Law Conference, this is again the Erie County Association of School Board Law Conference, will be held on Wednesday, August 1st, 2018 at the Millennium Hotel in Chitewauga. Dr. McClary, Mrs. Van Sice, and myself have indicated that we would like to attend. Are there any other board members who would like to attend?
I am unable to at this time.
You are unable?
I can only go for a half-day and I don't think there's a way to pay that.
Okey-dokey, we'll scratch you from the docket. Anybody else possibly able to take the day and go to the law conference? Nope. Okay, could somebody please make a motion to approve the registration and expenditures to attend the 40th Annual Western New York Educational Conference, August the 1st, 2018, at the Millennium Hotel in Chitewauga, New York? Dr. Benator, second? Mrs. Beeger, any discussion? All in favor? Motion carries unanimously. Dr. Marzloff, could you please give us your community update?
Yes, just briefly, this evening, Mr. Lemay, I first want to welcome Mr. Bornstein to the school board in your first meeting and we'll look forward to catching you up on all the goings-on within the school district and helping you orient yourself to school board membership and any questions that you might have, we will aim to answer for you, so welcome and congratulations.
Thanks so much, appreciate it.
And I also just want to congratulate the class of 2018. Almost 800 students we had graduate from our three high schools. They're terrific ceremonies. I appreciate a number of board members here at the board table that were able to attend and provide speeches and inspiration to our young people for their exciting futures filled with success, so thank you very much for that and congratulations to our student graduates.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Would someone like to take the June 12th, 2018 motion from the table for second reading and adoption of policies 5660, meal charging and prohibition, or, excuse me, yeah, prohibition against meal shaming, 7242, military recruiters' access to secondary school students and information on students, 7512, student physicals, and 7513, administration of medication? Anyone? Mrs. Van Sice, thank you. Mr. Meyer, thank you. Any discussion? All in favor? Motion carries unanimously. Now we actually get to vote on these policies, so would someone like to make a motion for a second reading and adoption of these revised policies, 5660, 7242, 7512, and 7513? Mrs. Beeger, thank you. Is there a second? Mrs. Leatherbarrow, all in favor? Mrs. Leatherbarrow, all in favor? Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries unanimously. The year-end donation report is attached. Does anyone have any questions or comments on it? Nope. Would someone like to make a motion to approve the property tax settlement as presented? Mrs. Van Seis, thank you. Is there a second? Dr. Venator, thank you. Any discussion? All in favor? Motion carries unanimously. Are there any legislative matters that anyone wants to discuss this evening? There are no curriculum matters to discuss. There are also no personnel matters to discuss. Would someone like to make a motion to approve the change order as presented? Mrs. Beeger, is there a second? Mrs. Van Seis, any discussion? Uh, all in favor? Motion carries unanimously. Someone like to make a motion to approve the membership for the Committee on Special Education and the Committee on Preschool Special Education as presented? Mrs. Van Seis, is there a second? Dr. Venator, thank you. Any discussion? Okay, all in favor? Motion carries unanimously. Would someone like to make a motion to approve the appointment of the impartial hearing officers for the two thousand eighteen, two thousand nineteen school year as presented? Mrs. Beeger, second. Mr. Bornstein, thank you. Any discussion? All in favor? Okay, motion carries unanimously. That brings us to the performance plan indicators. Uh, Dr. Martzloff? Please.
Yeah, we had, uh, results of, uh, the performance plan indicators that are in your packet and happy to answer any questions that the board may have.
Mrs. Beeger?
Um, I, my question isn't really about the results. I'm just curious how much weight, um, these results have on our district as far as plans? Are these results like an import, a very important piece of data that is used by our district or more internal surveys really more important? I was just curious when I looked over this, uh, what implications this has on our programming in our district.
Doctor's here. If you'd like to comment, then I'll follow up after your comment, please.
Is one of the twenty indicators, state performance plan indicators issued by New York State Education Department, so it's important in that respect in terms of making the benchmarks?
Okay.
Um, that New York State sets forward. In addition to that, it is important information for our department and our district, because, again, we, we would be concerned if we did not make the, the targeted goal and also if we were, if, if it indicated to us that our parents were dissatisfied with the, um, the items that were assessed through this survey.
Great. I, I thought it was really interesting to see survey parent perspective, so I think it's wonderful that it's used in that capacity. Thank you.
Any other discussion? Oh, please, please.
First, I am very happy to see that there will be a continuum of services, um, at Dodge Elementary. So, now, based on this report, it shows that there's a continuum of services at every school, which makes sense. And I know, um, many parents will be very pleased with that. But also, um, to the parent questionnaire, it's excellent that you met the benchmark and we're actually over it, so that's excellent. I think the results were very positive. I realize that over eleven hundred surveys were sent out and you only received, I mean, usually they say ten percent, but you had well over that, two hundred and thirty-six, I think it was. Did you mail these or was this given out, handed to them at the annual reviews? Handed them out? Okay, so everyone received them in hand? Okay. Excellent. Thank you.
Any other discussion? Okay. Moving on. Would someone like to make a motion to approve the district's special education plan for July two thousand eighteen through July two thousand twenty as presented? Mrs. Beeger, second, please. Mrs. Leatherbarrow? Any discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries unanimously. Are there any committee of the whole matters that the board wishes to discuss this evening? Does anyone have any correspondences that they would like to share with the board? Proud. Would someone like to make a motion to meet in executive session to discuss employment matters relating to a particular person or persons, collective negotiations pursuant to Article fourteen, civil service law, and other current litigation matters? Mr. Meyer, is that a motion? Okay, got it. Second? Mr. Bornstein, all in favor? Motion carries unanimously. Would someone like to make a motion in return to public session, please? Dr. Venator, is there a second? Mr. Bornstein, all in favor? Motion carries unanimously. Is there any other business that the board would like to discuss at this time? Our next board meeting will be on Tuesday, August the seventh, two thousand eighteen, here in district offices.